Yes, Mr. Luhon. Did he call you guys too, Mr. Luhon? He texted me this afternoon. He's trying to fly back from Mexico City.
Recording in progress.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, you are aware of it because he did text me and so forth. So, okay, the April 16th regular council, regular council. The regular meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order 6:31 PM. Please rise and would you lead us in the place of allegiance on there?
Place your right hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
With the Planning Commission's meeting, I'd like to just do a short invocation. Good and gracious God, thank you for the gifts you give us each and every day of our lives, of our faith, family, and friends. And tonight, as we meet as a planning commission, supporting the city of Downey and all our residents, please give us strength and wisdom to do what's right for those who we serve and for the goodness of all the people here. And for those who are less fortunate, please be with them tonight, especially during this holy week. In your name we pray, amen. Okay, great, and Rhea, would you please take the role?
Yes. Commissioner Luhon, excused. Commissioner Sakali.
Here.
Commissioner Legospi.
Present.
Vice Chair Uva.
Here.
And Chair Gera.
I'm here, thank you. So, this is the time set aside for oral communication from the Planning Commission. Does any commissioners wish to make a statement, report on a conference meeting, or request for future agenda items? I'll start Vice Chair Uva.
None for me.
Okay, Mr. Zeigley?
Nothing for me either.
Mr. Legospi?
I have none, sir.
Okay, great. All right, presentations, we don't have any presentation. Does the Community Development Director have a report on any city council action or any other general updates?
Yes, Chair Gera, just wanted to let you know that item number one, which is a public hearing item, will be continued tonight. And that item, we've communicated with the applicant and the property owner, so they're aware of that. Staff will be working with the both parties to see if that item would come at a later date. And if it does, it would require a new public hearing that would be noticed. So that, so tonight, we only have one public hearing item, the zoning text amendment. Thank you.
Was that at the request of the applicant or the president?
The applicant is aware of it, yes.
No, not aware of it, at the request of the applicant.
There's a technical, technicality with their application, so they are amenable to the continuance.
Okay, but we notified them of the technicality?
Yeah, yes, both parties have been notified.
Okay, but did we catch the technicality and then let them know about it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, so now is the time set aside for public hearing. PLN 2500043. Does the Planning Commission Secretary, Rhea, have proof of publication?
Yes, I do.
Great. Will the Community Development Director introduce staff making the presentation?
Yes, tonight we'll have Lindsay Ortega, our planning consultant, providing the presentation tonight. Good evening, Chair Gera and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lindsay Ortega, I'm with Sagecrest Planning and Environmental. Before you today is a zoning text amendment for a city-initiated request to amend Article 9 of the Downey Municipal Code, regulating the location of bars, taverns, pubs, nightclubs, restaurants, I'm sorry, and restaurants with live entertainment. On January 14th, 2025, the city council directed staff to initiate a zoning text amendment to regulate the location of businesses whose primary function is focused on the exclusive sale of alcohol or restaurants providing live entertainment. Council's direction included amending the Downey Municipal Code to require a minimum 500-foot buffer with, from sensitive uses, such as schools, childcare facilities, senior centers, and hospitals. Per the city council's direction, the buffer would apply citywide, with the exception of the Downey, downtown Downey specific plan and the Downey Landing Promenade specific plan areas. There are 13 businesses currently operating as bars or restaurants with live entertainment, excluding those operating in the downtown Downey specific plan and Downey Landing Promenade specific plan areas. Nine of the 13 bars listed in the table shown and operate with a type 40 and 48 ABC license. Of the nine bars, seven also provide live entertainment. Four of the 13 businesses are restaurants with live entertainment, operating with a type 41 or 47 ABC license. None of the 13 businesses identified in the table on the screen operate as a nightclub. In 1933, the federal government gave exclusive jurisdiction to the state over the sale, purchase, and possession of alcoholic beverages. In California, this regulatory authority is vested in the Department of Alcohol Beverage and Control. Though the cities do not have the authority to regulate liquor licenses, they have the authority to regulate ancillary aspects of alcohol sales, including land use. An example of a locational standard is establishing zones which bars and other similar uses are permitted or prohibited. In addition to establishing zones, cities may also include buffer distances. As a local example, the Downey Municipal Code currently prohibits live entertainment businesses within the CP zone from locating within 100 feet of a residentially zoned property. The city council's direction is to, was to prepare a zoning text amendment focused on the regulation of businesses whose primary function is the exclusive sale of alcohol and restaurants providing live entertainment. The Downey Municipal Code land uses that most closely correlate to the council's direction are the following categories: bars, taverns, microbreweries with food and drink, nightclubs, and restaurants, cafes, coffee establishments with live entertainment. In accordance with the city council's direction, the proposed zoning text amendment would establish a new 500-foot buffer requirement for businesses that are classified as a bar, a tavern, a pub, nightclub, or restaurant providing live entertainment. The distance would be measured from the property line of the sensitive use of the property line of the parcel of the new proposed bar, tavern, pub, nightclub, or restaurant with live entertainment. This requirement would be incorporated into the Downey Municipal Code as per the text shown on the screen. This language would be included within the notes and exceptions in Table 9.35, Commercial Zones Use Regulations of the Downey Municipal Code. To determine the impact of the proposed zoning text amendment, staff overlaid a 500-foot radius from public and private schools, childcare centers, hospitals, and city-operated senior centers on the city map. Analysis of the map shows there would be several properties on Telegraph Road, Firestone Boulevard, Imperial Highway, Paramount Boulevard, and Lakewood Boulevard, where future bars, taverns, pubs, nightclubs, and restaurants with live entertainment locations could be, could be established. In Council District 1, there are three locations, with one location currently being legal nonconforming, as it is currently located in the C1 zone, which does not permit restaurants or alcohol uses. The other two establishments would not be impacted by the ordinance. In District 2, include, in District 2, there are two existing establishments, one of which is currently legal nonconforming, as it is also located in the C1 zone. Establishment number 12 would become legal nonconforming as a result of the ordinance, as it is located within 500 feet of a school. In Council District 3, there are five existing establishments, none of which are currently legal nonconforming. However, Establishment 1, 10, and 13 would become legal nonconforming as a result of the ordinance, as they are located within 500 feet of an identified sensitive use. And in Council District 4, there are three existing establishments. However, none of the locations would be impacted by the proposed 500-foot buffer. Further analysis of the city map with the radius overlaid shows that the five of the 13 existing businesses numbered 1, 3, 7, 10, and 13 would be classified as the legal nonconforming uses, should the city adopt the ordinance as proposed. In addition, there are currently two existing businesses, as mentioned previously, that are classified as legal nonconforming uses due to their location within the C1 zone, as these uses are no longer permitted in that zone. As with all legal nonconforming uses, they would be subject to the provisions of the Downey Municipal Code, Section 9410. Per that section of the code, nonconforming uses are not permitted to expand the use, increase the size of the tenant space, or relocate to another tenant space, except if the new location meets the minimum buffer requirements or is located in an area that does not have any restrictions for that particular use. As with all nonconforming uses, they are permitted to continue operations, provided that they are not discontinued for 180 days or more. Currently, the Downey Municipal Code does not provide a definition for a nightclub. To provide clarity within the Downey Municipal Code, a definition for a nightclub will be added to the Downey Municipal Code, Section 9418. The proposed definition is consistent with the definition that already exists in the city's land use documents, such as the Downey Downtown, I'm sorry, Downey Downtown, Downtown Downey specific plan. Additionally, a modification is proposed to provide clarification to, a definition of a bar. In Section 9124, it would be proposed to be modified to add a section in the underlying text, or in the blue text on the screen, which would add clarification regarding and/or live entertainment, and a bar shall mean the same as a tavern or a pub. Additionally, as part of the zoning text amendment, minor clarifications are proposed to definitions of uses correlated to the city council's direction, which include the bars, taverns, and pubs, nightclubs, restaurants with live entertainment, as well as microbreweries with food and drink, and cafes and coffee establishments with live entertainment. Microbreweries with food and drink are currently categorized together with bars, taverns, and pubs. The definition for microbreweries and brewpubs is proposed to be modified to reflect the existing Downey Municipal Code requirements that are, that the use must offer meals regardless of the ABC license, license type. Within DMC Section 9314.04, in the Commercial Zones Use Regulations, microbreweries with food and drink would be renamed to microbreweries and brewpubs to match the existing Downey Municipal Code definition in Section 9146. As part of the zoning text amendment, the definition shall be modified to remove the section shown in the strike through on the screen and add sections shown in the underlying text on the screen. And there are no microbreweries currently operating in the city. Microbreweries are proposed to be identified as an independent land use designation, separate from bars, taverns, and pubs, and would not be subject to the 500-foot buffer distance requirement. Similar to cafes, coffee establishments, and coffee establishments, microbreweries with food and drink do not focus primarily on the exclusive sale of alcohol, and therefore would not be subject to the 500-foot location buffer. At the direction of the city council, the proposed buffer requirement excludes any businesses within the downtown Downey specific plan and the Downey Landing specific plan. However, the Rancho Los Amigos specific plan, Lakewood-Firestone specific plan, and the Stonewood specific plan would require a specific plan amendment to add the 500 buffer requirement. A subsequent ordinance will come before the Planning Commission and city council at a later date to make modifications to the Rancho Los Amigos specific plan, Stonewood specific plan, and the Lakewood-Firestone specific plans. Modifications to the city's specific plans requires the city as a lead agency to consult with California Native American tribes prior to amending a specific plan under Senate Bill SB18. Notices inviting the California Native American tribes to consult on the proposed amendments were sent on April 7th, 2025, and the item to amend the specific plan will be forthcoming at a future Planning Commission and city council hearing. The proposed zoning text amendment is exempt pursuant to SEQA Section 1506.2, as it would not result in a direct or reasonably foreseeable physical change to the environment. And on April 3rd, 2025, a notice of the pending public hearing before the Planning Commission was published in the Downey Patriot and mailed out. Staff received one comment from one of the current establishment owners requesting to understand how their site would be impacted. The bar in question with live entertainment is already a legal nonconforming use as it is located in a C1 zone, and therefore would not be impacted by the proposed ordinance. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 25-4047, recommending approval to the city council of a zoning text amendment to Section 931404 of the Downey Municipal Code to regulate the locations of bars, taverns, pubs, nightclubs, and restaurants with live entertainment, and to Section 9124 to modify definitions of a bar, and to Section 9146 to modify the definition of microbreweries and brewpubs, and Section 9148 to add the definition of a nightclub. This concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. I do, I wanted to start out with a couple of questions. We got, we have the copy of the letter here from that establishment. So you said it's illegal nonconforming now?
Yes, it's located in a C1 zone.
Okay, so what does that mean exactly?
So with or without this particular ordinance, the establishment already is restricted from expanding or relocating within that C1 zone. If they chose to move to a different location that allows for that use, then they would no longer be legal nonconforming, but at that location, they are nonconforming.
Okay, so does that also, we had this questions when we-
Chair Gera, can I expand on that just for clarification? Table 3 in the staff report shows where currently bars are permitted. And so the reason that it's legal nonconforming is because in the C1 zone, it's currently not a permitted use. Back when it established, it probably was. The code has changed since then, so I just wanted to provide that clarification, thank you.
Thank you. It just brought up a lot of que, I mean, these questions, I kind of want to ask these questions in general, not just about this particular project, because we have this issue with the smoking, you know, establishments and so forth. So, I want to make sure, so this, okay, not talking about the Glen specifically, but if you have one of these establishments, you're saying they can't expand? And how about if they want to sell, can they sell to a different property owner, another business?
Yes, they're able to sell, they'd be able to continue operations, unless at any point they cease operations for more than 180 days, then their legal nonconforming status is vacated. But as long as they continue to operate, they can, they can sell and continue to operate at that location.
Okay, and if the place next door to them opens up and they want to take it over, can they do that?
If they're located within the buffer zone.
No, no, I'm talking about just an establishment. You forget the Glen, but another one right now that's going to be impacted by this ordinance. Okay, so we're saying that the day after the ordinance passes, the place next door is now available, so they can't buy it and expand their bar?
No, as currently proposed, they would not be able to expand. Unless that, yeah, no, they would not be able to expand.
Because that was an issue that we had with the-
Just further clarification on that. The businesses that would not be able to expand are the ones that are within, within 500 feet of a sensitive use, as defined by the council's direction. If you were a new business that came in and were not in the buffer zone, and then subsequently wanted to expand, those businesses could expand.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is, this is the same issue we had with the smoking. It's exactly the same. With the smoking locations on there that originally in the, and we changed it that night here on there, that if, if you couldn't, you know, the same thing, you can't, you can't buy the place next door now under one of these locations on here. So what we did, we changed it on the smoking that these people were grandfathered in. So all I'm saying is, I understand we don't want a new one, okay? But if I own one of these establishments, and I've had no issues with the law, I've had no complaints, I've been a good citizen, and so forth, and tomorrow then it opens up, you're taking my right away from expanding my business, you're taking some property away. So is this something that we could discuss, that's anything what the Planning Commission wants to do?
Yes, it's at the pleasure of the commission for your deliberation to consider what's before you and any other considerations.
And we can, and to look at changes in it possibly, the grandfather some of these businesses in?
That recommendation would be at the pleasure and discussion of the commission.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there, and this was, I understand that the city council, I saw that, you know, directed to do this, but has there been any problems or complaints? Besides, you know, we hear the general complaint, oh, we have too many bars, you know? But is there any, was there any issue? Because the smoking one, there was no issues, we just wanted to do that. And on this one here, has there been issues within those C1s right now?
During the two meetings that we had with the city council in, I believe in April of 2024, and then in January prior to that, there was general discussion about having sensitive uses being, bars and live entertainment being located in proximity to sensitive uses. And during the discussion with the city council, as we were discussing what was being considered as a sensitive use by the council, city council, it was further defined that it was a concern over schools and daycares and proximity of these locations to areas where children would come by. So that was the concern. As far as a specific location, there was not a specific location that was discussed by the city council, but rather the subject matter of regulating in the future that these businesses would not be so close to places where children would be on a regular basis.
And I understand that then, so, but I guess what I'm asking is, so there wasn't an issue on any particular one. I understand we don't want any more next to sensitive issues, that's the direction of the council. But I guess my question is, if we said, okay, we're going to grandfather these in, no new ones coming in, is that something that the Planning Commission can decide if they want to?
The Planning Commission can make a recommendation, but I would just maybe add for the Planning Commission's consideration that the city council wanted to lessen the proximity to a bar, for example, to a school. So if a business were allowed to expand, that could be that that business is expanding and getting closer to a sensitive use, and that would be contrary to the council's direction. So that's just something you can consider. But the question at hand is, can you make a recommendation to change staff's recommendation? Yes, that is at the pleasure and discussion of the Planning Commission. If you made such a recommendation, then we would somehow incorporate your collective recommendation into what we forward to the city council.
Okay, could you answer some of these questions? So are any of these listed businesses going to be forced to close, or are they grandfathered?
Yes, I'll have Ms. Swati Meshram answer some of these questions.
So Chair Gera, on the table number one in the report, and also within the slide deck, shows you locations of the 13 that are currently operating within the city outside of the downtown Downey area. And the map, oh, thank you. So the ones that are shown in gray are the ones that will become legal nonconforming after the adoption of this proposed zoning text amendment by the city council. The two which are, which have a little star next to them, which is row number two and row number three, are already legal nonconforming, independent of this action.
Okay. So to answer the question on there, they're, they're not being forced to close?
None of them, none of them would be forced to close. And they can continue indefinitely up till the point that they stop their business for 180 days.
Okay.
If I may, just right on that point. So numbers two and three, yes, two and three, the ones with the asterisk, they are not near a sensitive, they're not in that buffer zone. Is that why they're okay?
They're, they're, they are still located in, within a buffer zone.
Oh, they are?
Yes. Well, number two is not located within a buffer zone, number three is. But number two is in a C1 zone.
C1, okay.
Both actually, number two and three are in C1 zones. So regardless of whether or not the ordinance were to be approved by city council, those two would still continue to be nonconforming uses. So they wouldn't be able to expand or continue operations if they were to cease operations after 180 days.
Thank you.
I have a question on the matter of expansion. You see a lot of these small shopping centers, sometimes the business like, there's a wall separating the two businesses and what have you. On the assumption that one business, in this case, one of those businesses, legal nonconforming, has been experiencing a lot of businesses in the last several years, and it just so happened the business right next door that's separating him, the wall separating him from the other business, gets vacant. What are the chances if he wants to expand, all he had to do is knock off one wall, and he expands to the other side, now he has plenty of room for his customers? He's still within the same location, maybe moved, not even moving, he's just right there in the same spot. So why would that be illegal for him to expand? I understand, let's say he wants to go to another location within the buffer zone, he's not allowed to do that. But if he's expanding with it, within feet of his present location, why would that be illegal?
So currently, as the ordinance is proposed, we, or as the ordinance has been written, it's from property line to property line. So if the property line, if the parcel is located within that buffer zone, it would become, the entire parcel would become legal nonconforming, and therefore, expansion would not be permitted. And as Community Development Director Huthram was saying, in this case, the, it would be potentially exacerbating the nonconformance by expanding and making that use larger if it's been identified as a nonconforming use.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a subsequent question to that one.
I'm sorry.
See what you did?
I'm so sorry.
It'll come back.
You want to, you want to take over?
It'll come back, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sure, sure, you'll be next. Ms. Ortega, thank you for your presentation. Thank you very much, we appreciate you, you being here. So many times when people sign a five or 10-year lease agreement with a property owner, it's with the intent of them being successful. Hence why they save their money and they sign a long-term lease agreement. Many times, if the lease is written correctly, they have options to renew their lease, usually another five or 10 years. either to the right or to the left, they have what we call the, their right of first refusal. That means that the property owner goes to them before they go to anyone else, whether it's to the right or to the left. So if there's a legally binding agreement between the property owner and the existing tenant, in this case, our business, and assuming they have no issues with our logo PD or, or any issues with the ABC, right, within compliance, for compliance purposes, are we, are we doing the right thing by not allowing them to expand their current footprint, like my fellow commissioners said, to the right or to the left? If they're successful, why are we stopping them from being even more successful if they're bringing tax sales revenues to our city and no one's complaining? I, I think that is a fundamental issue that we're going to have to discuss.
Currently, there would be three locations that are impacted, that are not, the other two are already technically legal nonconforming, so they're not permitted to expand anyways under the current municipal code. So there would be three of the total thirteen that are newly impacted by the current ordinance. There are a number of other areas in the city that would still be available for a new establishment to be located. But for the most part, the ordinance was drafted in a way that, per direction from city council, based on concerns of the current locations that are nonconforming, or I'm sorry, that are existing, that are in close proximity to sensitive uses that were identified by the council. So the, from direction from them, the ordinance was crafted in a way that would potentially
Understood.
Insulate, I suppose, those sensitive uses, identified sensitive uses.
Thank you for that. Thank you. I'll, I'll just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, it, it just, it seems a little unfair to the leasing, if you will, that signed that lease agreement, and they have every option, they have every right to exercise that option to go to the right or to the left, and now we're saying, no, you cannot expand your business. It's, it just doesn't feel right. So I, I think there's, I think there's room for, for more discussion on that. Sir?
If I may, Chair Garrett, just a quick recap is that the, when the city council discussed this item, and I have the dates now, April, April in twenty twenty-four, and again, on January of twenty twenty-five, there were seven options given to city council on how to potentially address the concern that was being brought to the council. Creating the buffer zones was only one of those choices. There was other, other choices that would have not created legal nonconformities, which we described to the city council, they were aware that buffer zones would potentially create legal nonconforming uses. And some of the other choices were to continue to require the businesses to apply for a CUP and that the city would have operational standards, performance standards related to noise and adverse impacts to sensitive uses. That was just another buffer, another option, just for example. And so in considering the various options, the city council really was looking at reducing or eliminating the proximity from sensitive uses to the bars and live entertainment. Ultimately, I think that the, the topics that are being brought up until now, I think were brought up during the city council meeting, during their deliberation and discussion. And so their direction ultimately was to create the buffer zones, which they were aware would create legal nonconforming uses. So I just wanted to provide that context.
Thank you for that. You, you mentioned there were seven of them? Could we, could we go through each one real quick? So one, one is obviously what we're discussing, the second one is a conditional use permit. What would be the other five that were brought up as options?
I could, I could look up that report right now, and if we want to take a couple of other questions, I can pull up the report and go over them.
Thank you.
So, but we, again, with the direction, but did they specifically say, we don't want to have a business be able to expand next door? I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is like, if we didn't have a chance to vote on this or to make amendments, then why are we here, you know, kind of thing on there? So, I, I mean, I, I do feel that that's unfair. I, I understand that, I'm not quite sure the direction is specific to exactly that. That's the only, or, or maybe it is, but I, I, it doesn't, it's inherently unfair what he just said, okay? For a business not to be able to. You know, I understand the Glenn, but if Donna's Cleaners next door, both businesses have been there for thirty, forty years, have been there, so Donna's Cleaners goes out of business, the, the Glenn can't knock down the wall, doesn't seem right. And you're saying they already can't do that?
Right.
But when did that happen?
I believe as of two thousand eight.
Okay, so they, because I believe the Glenn's changed ownership since then, but I mean...
And they can continue to change ownership, even with their nonconforming status. It's only if, let's say they stop operating for, for the one hundred and eighty days, and then maybe a year later, another operator wants to open back up, if they come back in for their business license, they would be told they wouldn't be able to operate at that location, even today and present day.
But, okay, but it just seems inherently unfair to, to, to do that.
Chair Garrett, I just want to let you know that our staff, we're conveying the message.
Sure.
I'm providing additional context. If it's the desire of the commission collectively during your deliberation to make an alternate suggestion for recommendation, we'll work with you to achieve your goal as a commission. I think, Chair Garrett, to your point, you are reviewing it for a reason, because you have a greater bandwidth now during the public hearing to discuss it under the land use umbrella that the planning commission has. So I just want to let you know, our staff, we do appreciate your feedback and the reason that I provide you the history of the city council is just to provide you the context.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody since that initial thing of April twenty twenty-four, that any new businesses opened up in the city that would have like, hey, you wouldn't have been able to do this under this ordinance?
Staff is not aware of any such new business, Chair Garrett.
Okay, so it, it hasn't been an issue, we just don't want it to, to become an issue, I guess, right?
It, the, the city, this, this is not a, a staff-initiated amendment. This is a, so the city council, as per my earlier discussion on this, is, they didn't specifically ask us, or we didn't bring any data that said these establishments are creating an issue. It was rather the city council wanting to create in the end a distances between a sensitive use and the establishment so that children would not be exposed and see and be near the uses was what their message was to us.
Okay, I get it. Sir, did you, you remember?
I have a question. Besides the one I forgot, but. Was there any study to determine the distance, the actual distance from the businesses to the, to the required buffer zone? Are they four hundred and ninety feet, four hundred and ninety-five feet, three hundred feet? Was there any, any dimensions, any distance measured determined?
Yes, so we overlaid, so we took a, a map of the entire city and then mapped all of the identified sensitive uses that city council requested. So they went through at their April twenty-four, I believe it was twenty-fourth meeting in twenty twenty-four and identified which uses they were concerned with, that felt were sensitive uses. And that was identifying childcare centers, hospitals, city initiated, or city operated senior centers and schools. And we mapped all of those and I done, and created a five hundred foot buffer around every one of those uses in the city. And then we went and we identified through business license records, all of the existing establishments that again were also identified by city council as uses of concern. And that included bars, taverns, nightclubs, and restaurants with live entertainment, that operated with live entertainment. So we mapped those uses throughout the city and then identified in what proximity those uses would be to the sensitive, identified sensitive uses. And that's where we, we had our thirteen identified establishments, and that's how we identified whether or not those uses would become nonconforming because they're located within that buffer zone. We did that in particular to identify how impactful the ordinance would be if it became an ordinance that essentially made it impossible for any type of restaurant with live entertainment or bar alcohol type use to come into the city, then we knew that that five hundred foot buffer was infeasible and would not be, would essentially be a prohibition of those types of uses in the city. In this case, there are a number of commercial sites throughout the city that could still operate and have these types of uses still locate without being considered nonconforming.
Okay, I want to clarify something. What took place on, in April twenty twenty-four?
There was a city council meeting in April that initially brought the seven different options before the council. Council requested that staff begin the research to identify potential ways to regulate these types of uses. So staff came before city council in April of twenty twenty-four to present options for regulating these types of uses in the city. And then from that discussion, staff then went back and mapped all of these sites, identified potential impacts to those, to, to sites being able to locate or establishments being able to locate within the city, and then brought forth three additional options or, or three more limited options to the city council. And those three options that were discussed in January of twenty twenty-five included a five hundred foot buffer, establishing a, no change to the existing ordinance, leaving it to the conditional use permit process to the zones which permit it. And then the other option was to add locational, more locational code requirements to that CUP process that would give some discretion to the planning commission to be able to decide, okay, this location is within that five hundred foot buffer, so we're going to apply additional hours of operation, or we're going to apply other types of conditions of approval that may better insulate those types of developments from impacting the sensitive uses. And with that, the city council selected to go with just the five hundred foot buffer that would essentially prohibit those types of establishments and uses from locating within that five hundred foot buffer to sensitive uses.
And when was that decision made, which city council meeting?
That was January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
What I'm leading to is this, from April twenty twenty-four to January twenty-five, was there any notification to any of these businesses that the city planning to modify the city code and placing, maybe placing a buffer at any time at all? Or you just sent them on April, whenever you sent them the, the notification?
Public notices for the hearings were sent out for both city council meetings. At that time...
I can clarify, but those, those were not public hearings.
Yeah, they weren't public hearings.
The, yeah, I can clarify, the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four city council meetings were, are called administrative reports. Those are for discussion with the city council. It's an agendized item where the city council can openly discuss a specific topic without violating the Brown Act, but is not required to be a public hearing, because at that time there was not a specific amendment to any code being considered. It was simply for them to be able to deliberate openly without violating the Brown Act. And so at the April, at the...
January fourteenth.
At the January, at the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting, the various options that were presented to them, and I think I might have spoken earlier, I think I said seven. I'm looking at the staff report right now, and it's actually, first option was for staff to potentially, to continue to require CUP to operate a bar. That was option, no change would be required to the zoning code. Option two was to establish buffer zones for businesses that operate as bars with the exclusive sale of alcohol, focusing on those with exclusive sale of alcohol, nightclubs and live entertainment uses. And this, there was no set buffer distance provided by staff, but rather staff, because this was a discussion item. We let them know that, based on our preliminary research of other cities, there was a wide range that could be considered, and that was a subject of discussion during the city council meeting. Possible discussions for them, pointed out to them for that evening was to discuss what potentially would be a buffer zone and what that distance would be. We also advised them that there would be a creation of legal nonconforming use, where uses would be limited and being able to expand, and also if they were to cease operating for more than one hundred and eighty days, that that would be a factor in determining whether or not their legal nonconforming use could be continued. We let them know that if they selected that option, that staff would prepare the ordinance specifying the requirements for buffer zones. And so subsequent to that, they asked us, well, let me finish the options. Another option was for staff to research and provide recommendations for developing best practices that provide operational and performance requirements and guidelines in order to streamline the review processes. Examples of these topic areas would be hours of operation, lighting, security measures, sound attenuation and noise monitoring services, to name a few. This option was presented as an option that wouldn't really, would work in conjunction with the existing CUP requirement, and it would serve as a tool where we could specifically address in advance by creating performance standards of any potential adverse impacts to uses, but that was not the option that was selected. Another option was that we provided to them that evening was to explore zoning regulations that would limit zoning districts in which the, the uses, bars, nightclubs and those with live entertainment would be allowed. That would require that staff research the zoning districts and provide options for which zones they would continue to be allowed or not be allowed, but that option was not selected as well. We let them know that if they selected that option, that our research and findings would be presented to the planning commission. And then the last option was just to continue to require CUP as specified by the zone, requiring no buffer zones and no, no specific operational standards that they would be, standards that would be set forth through conditional, conditions of approval, unique to that specific conditional use permit application. And that, that was the end of, of the options provided to the council on the meeting of April twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Cyclie, I think I can answer. The, the short question is no, on there, to your question regarding that, there was nothing there, because there was nothing to really present to them.
That's true.
At that point, so.
So we're here presenting these to these businesses that as of whenever this extension of the code gets adopted, you're going to write them a letter that you can no longer expand, blah, 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 whatever the case may be, for, for the, the new, new language that you're going to be putting in the code. Now, if I'm a businessman and I have a business and I'm willing to expand my business, it's going to take me some time to draw plans, I'm going to, let's say, whatever I need to do next door, draw some plans, get a permit from the building and safety department, get it approved, and get into the construction and expand my business. How long do you think that's going to take? My estimate between, between one, maybe two years at the most. Was any of those, if none of those businesses were notified at that time and they were planning to expand, now they cannot because of new municipal code language. So in reality, we are actually not allowing them to expand and not, and not generate any additional revenue. In order for this to happen, to adopt this language, there should be a, a grace period for the businesses. If they're willing to expand, you have to apply for a business or building permit within the next six months, expand build within the next twenty-four months. Anytime after that, you're not allowed to do anything, because we already gave you plenty of time, because all these business, all this work requires time, and you're not given that time.
However, if you put that kind of requirement, the, the place next door may not be available within that six months to whatever that time period. within that six months to whatever that time period is. And then it kind of, it's null and void for them because it's not available. They can only act upon it when it becomes available.
Well, we can, we can also come back. Again, it's our discretion to make the recommendation that these businesses are grandfathered in, just like we did with the smoke-
The tobacco stuff, yeah.
The tobacco thing because that way they, they have that opportunity. And, you know, I'm looking back at this. Could you tell us what the sensitive areas? You said hospital and that just kind of surprised me. What, what are the other sensitive areas? Hospitals?
So the sensitive uses that were identified by city council during their April twenty twenty four meeting included hospitals, senior centers operated by the city, schools, which include private and public schools and childcare centers.
Okay. I mean, you know, you obviously understand that schools and everything else, but, you know, I don't know. If I have a place next to P I H, I guess, you know, five hundred feet, I guess it'd be hard to get anyways, but, okay, all right. So can you go back on that list again, one more time of the places there? No, the one that we just showed of all this, yeah. The thirteen places and so forth. And, and the only, yeah, go back one more. Okay, so the only reason I'm saying is like number six. So number six, I happened to go by there again over the weekend because ninety five, fourteen next door was originally a public hearing location. So I went there and I walked around and so forth, and then I realized that same old saloon is right next door to that and so forth. How is that? I don't understand what the sensitive area is. That couldn't be any more commercial to me on that corner Firestone and, and Old River. It's Stewart and Gray, Stewart and Gray and Firestone. So how is that, how is that close to a sensitive area?
I'm sorry, number six is not located near a sensitive area, so it's-
Okay, that's white.
Yeah, it's white. So it's, it's not identified, it wouldn't be a legal nonconforming use, only that the item's in gray.
Okay, so gray. Okay, so Gloria's Mexican restaurant over there up and up on floor, you know, I guess there's houses back there behind the thing on there, but they haven't had an issue with, okay.
I believe Gloria's is, is because they have live entertainment and they are located near a school.
What school is Gloria's by? That's on, right, that's on Florence.
So it's, and actually in this map, the buffer zone's not shown, but it's up on thirteen, there's a-
Well, that's more than five hundred feet, the, the blue thing way over there.
No, not that one. It's, it's not, unfortunately, the, oh, I don't know what I did. Oh, it's on the bottom? No. How do I make it red? Okay, it's, unfortunately, this map was not the latest map. It's missing the buffer, but there is a buffer zone here.
What, well, it's not a public school, there may be a childcare center somewhere in the neighborhood or something like that because there's nothing of these senior center schools or childcare hospital.
Yeah, I believe it's a private school. Unfortunately, I don't have the list of the schools with me. I can pull that up though, but that's, that's what would make it a, a nonconforming use.
And you're talking about thirteen, number thirteen on the screen?
Right.
Okay, we just didn't put the blue thing in.
Yeah, I, unfortunately, there was a change that got made to the map and the buffer got left off, but that'll be corrected for the next meeting.
Okay. Can, can we answer some of these questions? Because I understand now you're saying that the plan is in two thousand and eight and so forth, but I want to know for the other ones on there. So question number two, what happens if a new sensitive use business open within five hundred feet of an existing bar that has an entertainment license? So, and it can't, well, you're basically saying a new business can't open up. What happens if a new sensitive use business on there? Okay, within five hundred, so you're saying that can't happen in number two. Number three, will any of the listed businesses be losing their entertainment license? So the answer is no?
No.
Okay, all right. No. What kind of changes should we expect in the entertainment license? So basically, none, you just can't expand or on there? Okay, no changes now? Okay, so none? I'm just, like I said, I, I know that this was specifically asked by one order, but it's, so pool tables, dartboards and other coin operated machines are okay, but what about TVs and jukeboxes?
Whatever they're performed, their live entertainment license would continue. No, there are no changes to their operations that are proposed. The only proposal would be that if you are located within a buffer zone, you wouldn't be able to expand.
Okay, and that's, you're talking the physical location, not the internal? Like in other words, if I have five TVs and I put ten, that's not an issue, right? Of course.
That would be determined by their live, live entertainment license, but-
So whatever they, it is, yeah, okay.
Is a jukebox usually considered live entertainment? Do you know?
I can answer that question. So live entertainment, TVs and jukeboxes were to be, not be under the CUP classification of live entertainment, that would be under a police permit that requires entertainment of that type to obtain a police permit.
Thank you.
So can we go back to the list again? I just want to make sure, the one with all the, all the ones on there? Okay, so, okay, so the white one, with the exception of two, the five of the thirteen businesses would be legal nonconforming as a result of the ordinance on there. So what does that mean? So what is, again, I'm just using same old saloon just because I happen to drive, I've never been inside there.
Cheers. Just to clarify, thirteen businesses are not all becoming legal nonconforming. This is just a list of thirteen businesses that are existing within the city. Only some of them will become legal nonconforming and those are shown in gray.
Okay, so, okay. So, okay, the same old saloon is number six. Kind of here real fast. Okay, six, six, where's?
So six is located down here.
Okay, that's, well, on our screen, it's right where the, the teleprompter thing works on there, but okay, so I see it down here.
And it's just outside of, of a buffer zone.
What's the buffer there?
There's a school.
Oh, but to Kirkwood, about away, a couple of blocks away. All right, but that's in a private residential area because, okay, because I'm just looking at it, it's like, you know, if they, if the car wash closed down next door, they can't expend, expand next door to that.
They may be able to, just because they, they aren't considered legal nonconforming and there is a commercial portion of that property that is also outside of the buffer. It just depends on property lines because the ordinance was written, unlike the tobacco ordinance, which is written from tenant space to property line. This is written from property line to property line.
Okay. Okay.
I have another question. Actually, ironically, question number six, would we be able to expand to the next door suite? For you to, my, earlier what I was talking about. Now, let's assume I have this business right here. And you're not going to allow me to expand, but the next suite is a couple hundred square feet larger than the one I have. Can I just relocate?
It would depend. If you're a legal nonconforming-
You are really legal nonconforming, yes.
You're now legal nonconforming, so you're one of the three that will become legal nonconforming as a result of this ordinance. You would not be able to expand into the adjacent suite. If you were, if you're one of the units or the businesses that is already currently legal nonconforming because they're operating in the C one zone, they wouldn't be able to expand regardless of whether or not this ordinance were to be approved. If you're one of the other eight, if my math is correct, locations that are not within a buffer zone, then you'd be able to expand as long as you're not expanding into a suite that is now, well, and actually it's, as currently written, it's property line to property line. So if you're a legally established establishment that does not have, is not located within one of the buffer zones, you'd be able to locate and expand into the adjacent suite.
Good, right, that we understand. Now, I, I have a question. Did the city notify these specific businesses via a letter or just, we just floated a, a public outreach, you know, in the newspaper and what have you?
Yes.
Because it seems like-
We, we, we followed the municipal code requirements, which is we sent them a public notice and we also sent the, the business a notice as well.
And that was done last week?
That was per the slide on April-
April seventh?
We can pull up the slide to show the date that was shown.
A week ago.
So you sent them a week ago, tell them you no longer be able to expand and we're going to change the municipal code or what?
I know, the notice would have said that it's coming before the planning commission for a recommendation, and then the planning commission would make a recommendation to the city council. So the city council will then review this item and the planning commission's recommendations and have a discussion as well and decide whether or not to approve, modify or not move forward with the ordinance as written or, or modified by the planning commission. And then at that point, there will be a second reading. So it'll come back for a second reading to another council meeting.
Okay, so it's going to take two readings? Okay, so i- in fact, that now, these businesses were never given the opportunity to pull the business license, or I'm sorry, to build a, a building permit if they want to expand prior to this acceptance of the amendment of the code. Now, once they receive the letter, their, their hands are tied, they can't do anything.
Well, it hasn't been-
In other words, you, you need to give them time if they want to expand prior to the acceptance of this code, they should be able to do that knowing, knowing that they will not be able to expand thereafter. You need to give them some time to do that. If you're not giving them enough time, you only give them thirty days, what's he going to do with thirty days? In the meantime, let's assume you, you notify the business and say, oops, I better go pull the building permit because I'll plan to expand. He goes out to building permit, oh, I'm sorry, we, we can't, you can't expand because it's, the municipal code has been adopted and you can't do that anymore. You just kill his business.
And the planning commission can decide to amend the ordinance and, and add provisions such as the one that you're recommending as a recommendation to the council for their consideration and, and to determine whether or not to, to include that in the adopted ordinance, if they do choose to adopt the ordinance.
Could you go back to the list again, please? I'm sorry, that just speaks volumes to me, I apologize.
Would you, do you want to see it on the map or do you want to see it?
No, no, that's okay. That's all right, I mean, for the moment, yeah, okay. So, so it could be our, our discretion to recommend that all thirteen of these are grandfathered in. So, I mean, what does that mean? In other words, you know, I understand the purpose of not wanting to add more bars and restaurants and stuff, but we're saying Gloria's, you've, you know, you've been here a while, okay, many years, right? You own a couple establishments on there, so you're grandfathered in, whatever that means, okay? And some of these other, I mean, again, unless there's been an issue from the legal standpoint or from, you know, too many police calls or we're selling alcohol to, you know, whatever, I'm saying is, I, I'd sure like to, when we get to that point, I guess, consideration on there, but we can do that if we want to. I'm not saying, you're saying it's okay to do that, I'm just saying we can do that.
The planning commission can make a recommendation at your pleasure.
Okay, okay, so. And, and technically, what would that mean if we said we're going to grandfather these? So the white, the two existing are currently on there, five of the existing thirteen would become legal conforming in the, as a result of the ordinance? Okay, so that would be the gray ones, one, two, three, four, five? No?
Right, and, and it's somewhat misleading in that technically two and three are already legal nonconforming.
Right, right. But, and what's the blue? There's no code on the blue.
The blue is-
The blue actually designates nothing in this chart. It was supposed to be white, blue alternating rows, and then when we added the gray shading to show the ones that will become nonconforming, it kind of lost the, the formatting on it.
Okay, all right.
So really, to, to be paid attention to is the gray, which becomes, which would become nonconforming. White, which would continue to stay, so will the blue. It will continue to stay because it is outside the, the buffer zones. And the only other thing to bear in mind would be rows two and three, which have little asterisks next to them because they're already-
They're already, okay, all right. But what I'm saying is, so twelve, kind of a tropical, so they want to, you know, make it nice now and take over the rest of the shopping center? And we're going to say, no, you can't, even though it's not an issue on there. The one that-
They can, twelve, they can. They can take over the entire shopping center if, if that's the route they wanted to go in the future because they're white, they are unaffected by this action.
It's just the gray locations.
They're not in a buffer zone, okay?
And just to, Chair Gera, if I may, and your discussion regarding which locations are affected by legal nonconforming, just based on your reference of past action by the planning commission where there was a recommendation to change, a staff's recommendation, the ones that you would focus on would actually be the gray, but would exclude number three. Number three is already legal nonconforming because it's not permitted in the zone. So that's, that's something that's not being newly, they would already not be able to expand because they're in a nonconforming zone. So this, this action really would be to prevent, by this staff report, prevent any, based on what the planning commission is saying, prevent any businesses from becoming, from attaining or having the new legal nonconforming. So it would be locations one-
Seven, ten and thirteen.
Ten and thirteen.
And just to clarify, Ms. Winter, the blue means nothing. That technically should be white.
That technically should be white, to be clear.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So if the guardsman, number five, you know, buys the, the burger place next door, they can expand there?
They're not within a buffer zone, they're not within five hundred feet of a sensitive use, so they would be able to expand.
That one seems to be more sensitive, there's houses.
Yeah, and just as, as a reminder, the, the actual location is not the sensitive use, it's what is near them. Is there a school, daycare, hospital, senior centers as defined by the city council as being a sensitive use?
But so, but residences is not?
The city council did not define residential uses as a sensitive use in this case.
Although, although there is already currently a buffer of a hundred feet to residential from a CP zone.
I'm sorry, we were talking, I didn't hear what you just said. No, it's our fault, now you apologize, can you repeat that, please?
There is an existing municipal requirement, municipal code requirement for locations located within a CP zone that they need to be situated a hundred feet away from residential.
And that would be for live entertainment only?
I was going to say for like, yeah, because that guardsman on there is, you know, twenty five feet away from residence.
Yeah, so as they're operating currently, they're fine. If they were to want to add in live entertainment, that would be prohibited.
Right, because of the noise factor.
Yeah, I know, that makes sense.
It makes sense, yeah, it makes sense.
Okay.
So really, just to, if we could please go back to that one chart that Chair Gera loves and we all love because it makes sense, we just, it's a-
It's all a win play.
Yeah, we're looking at the big picture. Really, we're just talking about five locations that would in essence be affected if this was to be-
Four locations.
Four locations, because number three in essence is already-
Yeah.
Falls within those guidelines, understood. So we're talking about four, okay?
So, yeah, so the four are number one, seven, ten and thirteen.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The purpose of showing us thirteen locations was not to confuse us, was just to let us know how many we have within-
Yes, that is, that is correct. Thirteen are not becoming nonconforming.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
Okay. Any further questions from my fellow commissioners?
No more, no more questions. But what I would like to say that I would really like to amend code and I'm, I'm going to rely on our city attorney to draft the language, at least maybe send these affected businesses an NOI or notice of intent that the city is planning to do whatever they need to do on the municipal code. And if they have any intention to expand, they have certain amount of days, let's say thirty, forty five days to apply for a building permit. If, and if they plan to expand, plan to, whatever, they need to move to another suite, larger suite in this case, they have to notify the city within a certain amount of time, pull the building permit and construct within a certain time, a certain period of time and complete it. I really want to give these businesses a chance. If, if they don't want to expand, then they're not going to- If they don't want to expand, Glenn, they're not gonna respond to you. But if they do want to expand, they've been waiting an opportunity for that next door to expire, to move in, now they lost that opportunity.
So, sir, that's great, let's finish, come back to the deliberation on there, why don't I open up the public hearing?
Oh, yeah.
I'd just clarify to commissioners safely, that that could be integrated into the ordinance as you recommend it for approval with modifications or otherwise. I think what you're asking, you know, in terms of a letter to be sent to the businesses is somewhat outside the ambit of the ordinance. I think it would ordinarily be integrated into the decision you're making tonight, rather than like a separate directive to my office or the director of community development's office to notify the businesses. The businesses were notified in accordance with the municipal code of the action under consideration tonight. The city has been compliant with the law in that regard.
We can't change the code per se, but you're absolutely right, it's just not enough time. I've always complained about that, that it's just, it's not enough time for somebody that has their, all their assets in something, I mean, it's the code, so they're legally doing it. But, yeah, if you give them a week's notice, it's not, so, okay, so. So I, at this time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing, it's not gonna be, oh, thank you, by the way, we're, sorry that you were on there, you should have drank the water. So God bless you on there, so.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Public hearing is now open, may staff confirm if there's any correspondence besides the one letter here in favor of opposition? We got the one letter in opposite, or questions, if you will?
No additional written communication was received.
Okay, great, so, is, at this time, any members of the audience wishing to address the planning commission regarding the public hearing item may come up to the podium with your numbers called. And I'm looking back there, I can't, you know, it's, you're number one, so like, there's nothing shorter, but I'm just wanting to see if there's anybody after you, but yes. And remind speakers, you have 3 minutes, sir, to listen, you've been patiently waiting here, so we will patiently listen to you regarding this item, so, go ahead, sir.
I think most of my questions have been answered, but I do have one thing with, we've been in contact to potentially purchase one of the places that's in the gray zone. If we were to purchase and we had to remodel, because a couple of those are older, so to speak, if we were remodeling for more than 6 months, would we not be allowed to reopen because?
Sure, that's a great question.
Because we took longer than 6 months to remodel for a place in the gray zone.
Are we, so this is public hearings, so are we allowed to, this is not just public comment, right? We're not allowed to answer it?
We can, we can hear all the questions and comments, and then staff would be happy to answer the questions following public comment.
It's just a technicality that we, you know, from that sample.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure, yeah, then, about the.
I don't have an answer for you, we will get an answer for you. What, can you, I don't want to speak proprietary, but are you, which, which one of those businesses are you considering, you don't have to tell us if, for a business.
The Stardust, the owner passed away, I wouldn't say a year ago or so, maybe about a year ago.
Okay.
The wife has been unsure about keeping it going or not, so we have made contact. And we've also made contact in the past about potentially taking over the place, but the place is quite old on the inside and would need some sort of rehab to really continue on as a business to have future growth.
That's the perfect question for, sometimes, some of these things have unintended consequences, so it's a good timing that you came up.
And I guess it's the same thing, too, if my place, if I had something happen, if I wanted to remodel.
Can I ask you what your place is?
I own the Glenn.
Oh, okay, alright.
One of the two owners, yes.
Okay, alright, so.
So, yeah, I mean, we don't currently need a remodel, but I mean, if something happened or whatever, you know, you never know if a busted pipe happened or something that requires length. I don't know what's gonna happen if it takes longer than 6 months, if we're closed, is that considered, oh, we lose our business at that point?
That's, that's, those are great questions, Heather. The good news is evidently you can have a whole bunch of more TVs in there, I'm being sarcastic.
That question I brought up because I know under the entertainment license, live, or TVs are considered the live entertainment on pool tables. But within the reading that I found on the website for tonight, it did specifically list that pool tables and coin-operated games could be, are still gonna be okay for all these businesses going forward. But I just wasn't sure about like TVs and jukeboxes.
Okay, those are, anything?
I think that's all my questions at this point.
Okay, good, we'll, we'll make sure, we'll answer, what happens is, we'll close the public hearing and then we'll answer that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anybody else, you guys, anybody else out there wants to speak on this? Okay, okay, alright, are you Katie Laris that sent the email? Okay, that's what I'm saying, or Kimberly, I'm sorry, I didn't have my glasses, I apologize. Well, good question, see, we read your questions, okay, so there's been no other one, the public hearing, I see nobody else, the public hearing is now closed. So now is the time for the planning commission to deliberate, but I'm gonna ask community development if you can answer some of those questions.
Of course, thank you, Chair Gera, and thank you for the question. A business would be able to take over an existing business that is currently operating. They could apply for the business license under their name, their ownership, process the paperwork to essentially transfer the business to them. They can obtain and apply for permits to remodel, and they can, their remodel can take as long as they need, as long as they have valid permits. We understand sometimes remodels take longer than 60 days even. So I would just say that the main thing is to maintain the valid payment of business license and any fees for permits during that time to ensure that there is no ambiguity about whether or not they were operating or intending to operate during that time. I've seen it before, other businesses take over and take some time. And we do that research and we determine that they're taking over and it just took them some time to buy new furniture, do some cosmetic work, that's not an issue.
Okay, so just to be clear from the business owner perspective here, so the Glenn, you know, 2 months from now, they decide, hey, we're gonna spend money and redo the inside and so forth. So they go through the process and the permits and stuff like that, so they close down 7 or 8 months from now, and they're gonna have 2 months to redo their stuff. So that's perfectly okay, because that goes past the 180 days.
That goes past the 180 days, but we look, are they maintaining their business license active, any other permits with the city active? Have they have active utilities, because typically businesses don't cancel their utilities that time, they don't abandon the building. So if a building was abandoned and we saw there was no activity and now we have transients and we have overgrown vegetation and it looks like an abandoned building, that's when we start questioning whether or not it was valid. But even in those cases, we look at business license records and other city permit records to determine whether or not it was actually abandoned.
Okay, alright, and the last question, I think, that the gentleman asked me too, I'm curious, because it's a gray one, is number 1, the Stardust. So under this scenario, if it got sold, if the Stardust sells to somebody else on there, it's okay, it's okay for me to purchase the Stardust on Firestone, is that okay?
The Stardust can, a new person can become the new owner of the business, being that it's a gray, in the gray row, which means that it would become a legal nonconforming use. What it would mean is they would be able to take over the existing floor area of that tenant space, but they would not be able to expand, add another 50 square feet, add another 100 square feet, add a whole other tenant space. They would have to stay within their existing footprint of the floor area that they own or lease at that time.
Okay, but they can make improvements on it, right?
They can make improvements as far as like interior modifications, tenant improvements, new counters, new floor plan configurations. As long as it stays within the approved land use of a bar, then we would consider it to be a continuation of a legal nonconforming use. In this case, there's, we have record that it's a bar with also no food service and live entertainment permits. So they would need to maintain their police permit for live entertainment and any business license active. And I would just advise them that they obtain proper advice from the building division to make sure that all the work that they do, that may require a permit, that they obtain a permit for it.
Okay, and that just, you just asked, you just put another question on there, we'll talk about that one, just, I don't have a clue, I don't know what these are. And I don't know anything about the Stardust, but a new owner comes in and they want to start selling some kind of food. So obviously, you're gonna have to go to the county for a health, health permit, but is that allowed or does this ordinance restrict anything that they can do in there from that perspective?
In that case, that is an excellent question. No, that, I would say that the sale of food generally is, that's, a restaurant is not the type of use, that a restaurant alone requires a CUP. It's usually the bar component or the live entertainment component that requires a CUP, that's considered to be an intensification of use. Establishing a restaurant, as long as a restaurant is permitted in the zone, which in the C2 zone, it would be permitted, then it would be a use that's permitted by right, it would be ancillary to what they have. And just really from a neighborhood standpoint, a business that provides food in addition to alcohol consumption is a more favored business model.
Sure, even if it's less than 50%, in other words, they, you know, they're gonna provide sandwiches on, so down there, so there, it's only 20% of their sales.
They can do that because they have a type 48 license, and the type 48 license from the state allows them to sell alcohol for onsite consumption without offering food. So food really just would be something that would introduce ancillary to the, to the use.
Right, okay, yeah, I was looking, I didn't know what the 41 license was.
If they would stay within their type 48 license but want to offer the food, then you're correct, they would need approval from the health department, they would need any city approvals for any types of modifications that they would need to establish, a small kitchen or an area. But at that point, it would be an ancillary, a secondary use to their primary use, which is a bar, a type 48 license with live entertainment.
Under the type 41, right above the thing here, 41, it says the sale of food is required, there's only one in the magical 13 there, it's like El Salte de Frail.
Yes.
So that is, food is required, is there?
A type 41 is typical type of license that a restaurant would have. So that is a type 41 or a type 47. The difference between those is the sale of distilled spirits for onsite consumption. But the both, 41 and 47 require food service, a restaurant type of establishment.
And again, it doesn't, it doesn't specify any particular percentage, right?
It does, it requires that over 50%, the state, the state ABC has that threshold, and the city just follows that threshold because that remains in compliance with state licensing.
Okay, okay, so now, where are we, where, is there any other questions that we have for staff based on the comments that we heard and so forth? Any questions or any comments on there, because I want to, I want to go into deliberation now.
Right, I don't have any questions, but thank you for, to the entire staff, because it's been a long night and a well put together presentation, thank you. And if we're passionate, it's not, it's nothing personal, okay, against staff, we just have a lot of questions, so thank you.
And this is, you know, this is a big change for 13 businesses on there potentially, even the ones that were white. You know, and whether we agree with the city council or not, you know, I mean, I think we have to do whatever we think is the right thing, so. I mean, I'm in favor of, and I want to see how my fellow commissioners, I'm in favor of grandfathering these 13, just like we did to the prior businesses that we did for the Smokey. I mean, it only impacts 5, but at least to grandfather all of these. I just, I feel strongly that we're taking people's property away, you know, I mean, to not be able to expand next door on there, it's, I'm a business person, I'm here. And again, as long as we don't, I don't have any issues. You know, the police have to come to my establishment every week, and there's been some, you know, underage, you know, drinking or so, I mean, you know, okay, that's shame on me. But it's hard for me to say, I agree with what you said earlier, we're, we're saying, hey, you're a good business person and we can't, you can't expand. And we're now confiscating some of your property rights as far as I'm concerned, so, I don't know, I want to entertain a motion that, you know, we can expand more, I want to hear what you guys think, that we grandfather these 13 businesses in.
Mr. Chair, just if I may interject, if there's no more public or comments or questions by members of the public, the public hearing remains open and should be closed before deliberation.
Oh, I thought we did close it, I'm so sorry, I did close it.
He did close.
Oh, we did, oh, forgive me then, my apologies.
I know my speaking of monotone voice there, Mr. City Attorney, okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, I heard it too.
Okay, good.
Heard it too, for the right, and Chair Gera, I, you know, going back to my previous comment, what if, again, the property owner has a contractual obligation to the tenant? It's part of the lease for them to be able to expand, and now, who's, is the property owner now being held liable? Because that, the tenant is not being able to enjoy what's in writing? There's, there might be other legal issues between the tenant and the property owner that we, we need to consider. So I, you know, grandfathering all 13 of them, I think, makes sense to me.
I concur, because I think it is a contractual, it could be a potential contractual problem for the tenant and for the landlord, and I don't want to be interfering in a business contract. Thereby prohibiting a business owner from acting to the terms of their lease. We want them to be able to fulfill their lease if they want to do something like that, if they have options to extend, we shouldn't, we shouldn't be restricting that, I agree 100%.
Ms. Haggan?
I agree with you.
Okay, alright, well.
I don't need to say more.
With that on there, can I ask you something, so I remember what you said about the gray, number 3, going back to the, to the chart. See, aren't you glad you did this chart, because we spent all night on this thing. So I understand number, number 3, we talked about the Glenn, and I apologize to the owners that are here, that, no, you cannot take Donna's cleaners evidently from a 2008 ordinance change. But why was the, number 2, the Anarchy, even though it's white?
Number 2 is located in the C1 zone, which is the same as the Glenn, they're both in the C1 zone, which does not permit restaurants or alcohol uses in that zone. The reason the Glenn is gray, which I can understand the confusion, is that it's, in addition to being in the C1 zone, it's also located within a buffer zone.
Okay, so the Anarchy is not in a buffer zone, it just happens to be at C1?
Yeah, so it may have been permitted at the time that it was originally located there, and it may not even have been the Anarchy Library at that time, it may have been a different bar previously. But at that time, whenever that bar opened, it was, it was allowed.
I have a question, thinking forward, these white establishments, they're fine now, they're not in the buffer zone. What if a childcare facility wants to open up within 500 feet of one of those, that it's not in a buffer zone now, what would happen?
It would then become a legal nonconforming use.
Oh, wow.
But, but the childcare knows that they're moving in next, within 500 feet of a bar? And that's, and now, and we're gonna punish the bar?
As currently written, if, that we would add that buffer zone around that sensitive use, and then, that would potentially become.
So they all 13 have to be grandfathered for sure?
I think that confirms our.
Our decision if we go that way.
Even more now.
Wow, I'm glad, good, thanks for asking that.
Good question.
Okay, yeah, make sure that that's in the minutes, okay, that's crazy, so, yeah.
And just a, just a reminder that sites 2 and 3 are existing legal nonconforming. We couldn't supersede what the zone currently doesn't allow through any other actions.
We, we, we're not arguing that.
But there's others that are white.
Glenn on there, I haven't been there in 40 years, but, you know, I'd like to be able to, to help them out.
I just wanted to point that out as you're deliberating, you know, which ones to exclude, that would not be included.
Sure, sure. Okay, I, is there a motion to, well, I'll make a motion that we grandfather all 13 of these here, because it's the right thing to do, you know, for these businesses, and is there?
I think what Irma's trying to point out is that 2 and 3, we can't.
We get it, we, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it, I understand that.
Okay.
I don't know, I still want to grandfather them.
You still do?
From, well, from the buffer zone, I mean, you know, I don't want to, why, if we're, if they put it down for 13, and you already told us 2 and 3, we can't do anything about, I just, I'm sorry, I'm just saying. I'm using all 13 because it makes it easier, that's what the chart does.
For the motion, yeah.
You know, but I mean, yeah, if you look at this, well, because on the 5, it says 1, 3, and 7, 7, 10, and 13. So 1 is the Stardust and 3 is the Glenn, anyways, I just, you know, yeah, I'd like to grandfather all 13 in with the, whatever the, the current laws are, which includes whatever 2 and 3, you know.
Chair Gera, could I clarify that the potential recommendation is to not apply the buffer zone, not apply the buffer zone to the existing businesses that are. the buffer zone, not apply the buffer zone to the existing businesses that are listed and those legally permitted upon the effective date of the ordinance?
Yes, I think that's
The buffer zone would not apply to these businesses and any business that's legally established at the time that the ordinance is adopted.
Correct, because I think you would make them legal non-conforming, which makes it even, it just is hard anyways, yes, that is what I'm saying.
Yes.
Is that, yeah.
Yes, just
You guys understand that?
I think that, that term, that direction would allow us to create the right language for table, table three, similar to a previous action on a different day, our recommend, the, the ordinance would be modified per planning commission's recommendation when we take it to the city council. So not applying the buffer zone to the locations listed and any, any establishments legally established at the time that the ordinance is effective.
Correct. You know, my view is these 13, well, again, what if, I want to make sure too, if you, if you missed one on here, there's a 14 somewhere that we missed, I want to make sure that, you know, as long as it fits these categories.
As I've stated it, that does include that. So any business listed here and any business that's legally established at the time of the effective date, which would be 30 days after the second reading at city council. So we'd include any business that's established between now and then.
Perfect, I will second that motion.
Okay. So before we vote, is, okay, so we're saying, I'd just take a, a gray one, that would have been before, let's take Gloria's. So, I don't know what my question is, I guess, I'm talking about, so these are okay if they want to, I don't have a clue where the Lovefoot Bar, the shuttle on Imperial is, but if they wanted to expand to the business next door, that they got it, that's perfectly okay now. It's still, it's still okay, because I mean, we could have before the ordinance. And I don't have a clue where they're at or who they are.
Which one are you referring to?
Moses's butcher shop.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's in that shopping center.
Oh, Luis's Market.
Luis's.
Oh, okay, all right, so if that place, oh, I like Luis's Market on there, they got, got great Doritos, I'm sorry, sorry. I need to get this way overnight, guys, okay? I've been working on this for 60 years.
You're making me up.
I know, me too. So that, that Lovefoot Bar and Shuttle, if they want to expand next door and take some of Moses's spots on there, they legally can if, under what we're going to be voting on it.
The, the buffer zone would not apply to them, which means that they would be able to expand, but they would still be subject to a conditional use permit approval.
Yeah. Oh, for expanding, just because they're a bar?
Yes.
Okay, but that's just, any bar would happen that, whether
Correct.
Yeah, so whatever our laws are.
Yeah, the, the buffer zone and actions by the planning commission doesn't supersede what the zone allows or doesn't allow.
Sure, that makes sense.
So, so I just thought about something, Chair Geran. So the, the way the motion is being proposed, are we saying they could expand to any of the suites within the shopping center? Or should we consider adding verbiage that they're, they could expand either to the right or to the left of their existing location?
Well, if they're going to be exempt from this, they can expand on that location from what I understand.
To, to any other suite, any other shopping center?
Well, no, I don't think any other shopping center.
The, the concept of expansion when it comes to land use matters before the planning commission is that a business has a specific footprint, for example, Suite 101, and assuming Suite 102 is next to them, they would expand their floor area to include that additional Suite 102 into their Suite 101. That is, in land use matters, that's what we typically look at as expansions.
Perfect.
So it's, it would be irrelevant further to, sorry for the interruption, it would be irrelevant whether it would be to the left, to the right, to the back, as long as it's immediately adjacent and incorporated into their floor area as one business.
Perfect.
Okay, but it's got to be immediately adjacent? So, you know, again, I, we're using hypotheticals, I just want to get on there, so that Lovefoot is next to Moises', but in the same shopping center way at the other end, there's now two locations that came, I want to close mine down here and go take those two, not immediately adjacent. Are we, is that, is that legally permissible, I guess, is what I'm saying. It's, I understand if they move to a new buffer area, that's, you know, now within 500 feet of a hospital, I guess. But it doesn't have to be immediately adjacent, it has to be in that same shopping center?
So if you're talking about business named, Business A
Right.
Is now not liking Suite 100, they want to move to Suite 300, which is on the other side of their site.
Right.
Can they transfer and move? That's a whole, that does not fall under what is being discussed tonight.
Okay.
That is, that is, would be a new location, and a new location would be subject to ensuring that that new location is not within the sensitive uses buffer zone.
And most likely it would be if it's within the same
Shopping center.
Shopping center. Hence why I'm
No, but that's, okay, so that's a good question on there. So Suite 300 is, is totally different, but it's still now, we grandfathered them in, but is that grandfather come in to a different part of the shopping center?
No, it would be considered a new legal, a new use, and it would be subject to the new requirements.
So the difference in a way is expanding the use where they are currently located versus relocating the use. I think what I'm understanding, the intent is to allow them to expand if the opportunity came up. But now we're also discussing, should we allow them to relocate to a different, different location, even if it is within the same plaza?
Okay, that's what I'm asking on there, so you're saying, no, they can't do that?
So they would not be able to do that as being proposed or as we previously discussed, and if that's something that the commission would want to consider, I would ask that you continue this item so that we can give that some thought and come back with some language. Because that would be a different from what we've been talking about. And staff, we would need additional time.
I have a question on, on the, on the table here. Maybe clarify something for me. It says here, five of the 13 existing businesses would become legal non-conforming as a result of the ordinance, one, three, seven, 10, 13, and so on. At the bottom, it says, two existing businesses are currently classified as legal non-conformant, non-conforming, two and three. So three is already a legal non-conforming, but up on a top you're saying three would become legal non-conforming.
Which page are you on? Which page are you on, Commissioners and colleagues?
I'm the screen.
He's reading the screen. And I apologize for that, it is a little confusing in that three is unique in that they're legal non-conforming because of the zone that they're currently located, which does not permit the use as it exists today. Also now, in addition to that, they've got a double legal non-conforming in that there would now be a buffer applied to it. So as it stands today, without the ordinance, they cannot expand, they cannot cease operations for 180 days or else they lose their ability to continue to operate. But if the ordinance were to be approved, that would additionally add that buffer that they're within that buffer zone. So I, I'll, I'll edit this for the next presentation so it's not as confusing, but that was, the intent was to say, five of these locations are in buffer zones and two of the establishments within the city already operate with a legal non-conforming status.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair Geran, Commissioner, I would add that by not applying the buffer zone to all these locations and any that exist at the time the ordinance becomes effective, Sites two and three would still consider, be considered legal non-conforming because they're in the C1 zone and the use is no longer permitted. So those two and three would still not be able to expand.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, okay?
So can you repeat the motion, please?
I, I think it was to grandfather these 13 per se, obviously, I understand two and three, but to grandfather the businesses that would not have to, from the buffer zone on there, so they're grandfathered in. If we don't want to have to call them legal non-conforming, they're just grandfathered in.
Chair, I think everyone realizes what you mean by grandfather, but I would just recommend that the motion as made incorporate the language that Director Retron had indicated so that staff has the direction it needs to in order to advance the matter.
Okay, could you repeat the language then?
Yes, for the record is that the motion would include a request that the ordinance be drafted in such a way that the buff, the proposed 500-foot buffer zone does not apply to the existing bars, nightclubs and restaurants with live entertainment, including those listed in the planning commission staff report today, and any establishments in these land use categories that exist at the time the ordinance becomes effective.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's, okay. We all on the same page, if you can understand?
Okay, so just for clarification.
Yeah, that's the legal ease, I like grandfather, but okay.
I understood what
Yeah.
Okay, so you want to grandfather them in as, as not being affected by the, by the buffer zone?
Correct.
Okay, if we do that, what happens afterwards? What happens to these businesses when you apply the buffer zone?
We would not apply the buffer zone, Commissioner Saicholi, the buffer zone would not apply to these businesses.
So they can expand, there's no restrictions, as long as they expand
Just like it is today, there's no
All right, okay, okay, that's totally different, okay, that's great, because I, I did see the example of the Stardust, that's kind of what I was leading to earlier, if the person wants to expand, give them a notice. If that's the case, if you want to remove that restriction, by all means, then, yes.
And to, just to make sure we're 100% clear, Ms. Retron, we're saying they're able to expand
The buff, by not applying the buffer zone, the, by not applying the buffer zone, it means that they would not be subject to having to become a legal non-conforming use, that they would be able to expand their use. And we would make sure that that language is included appropriately worded in the packet that's, the ordinance that's forwarded to the city council for their first reading.
I wanted to make sure, Ms. Irma, I'm sorry, that, that is all we have in the city that would have been legal non-conforming, unless we find some other business later, oops, we forgot one.
That's right.
Do we include that also as part of that, or?
Through, through the chair, the, upon planning commission's request, I have provided the language, don't ask me to repeat it right now because I may not be able to repeat it as eloquently as earlier, but the language that I suggested for, based on hearing the deliberation of the planning commission, included language that said includes any business that is legally operating on the effective date of the ordinance, which means it's 30 days after the city council approval. So it would include not only these, but any business that's legally operating on the effective date of the ordinance.
Okay.
So basically, to me, what this, what we're passing tonight is saying, okay, these, and if we forgot one, Lawrence on there and staff, it just, it, it, nothing happens differently to them. I mean, they still have to comply with all the regular, you know, ordinance we have, but there, there's nothing, it's no different than it is today for them, you know, whatever. Okay. Okay, are we good with the deliberation on there? We have a motion in a second, so at this time, I'm going to call for the question on there, so.
Motion passes four, zero and one absence.
Thank you, my fellow commissioners on there, this next one will not be very long.
We won't have multiple colors?
Multiple colors, yeah, one through 13. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, anybody if there are other discussion, please vote. Okay?
I'll get them go through, huh?
Motion passes four, zero with one absence.
Okay, well, thank you folks, I mean, I know it was, you know, I, you know, the time went by pretty quickly, I guess, because we had, we were all engaged. If, if you have the baby tonight, it's his fault, okay? So God bless you on there, and, and thank you, I think we, we deliberated enough to, and I think you see that we're all pretty pro businesses here, we want to make sure our businesses are protected in the city. Do you have anything else further, Retron?
I do not, Chair Geran, thank you.
Anything that you'd like to bring up?
No, thank you.
Okay, no thank you, because he doesn't want a question off of it. So, okay, being nothing else on there, our planning commission meeting is now adjourned. All right, yay. I know it's a process, I feel sorry, let me introduce myself to you folks on there.